Brian, is Ms. Ford and Dr. Jones online? Our Ms. Ford and Dr. Jones online, I apologize for that. They'll be logging in back to Zoom if you can open that Zoom meeting. They said they were logging back in.
We're back, June.
Ms. Ford, Dr. Jones, can you hear us?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
Good evening, good evening, apologies for the delay, appreciate you guys being patient with us as we came out of a long executive session. Excuse me, this is the regular meeting of the Kansas City Public School Board of Directors for July 20th, and we're calling it to order. June, do you have the roll? I think we can.
Mr. Barca?
Present.
Ms. Buckner? Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Ms. Ford?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Present.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Here.
Mr. Hogan?
Here, thank you, June. All right, can I get a motion to approve an amended agenda? We removed the regular business item number 11, which is for Manual, Family and Child Development Center, and the regular business item number 12 for Operation Breakthrough from the agenda.
Someone, second.
All right, June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner? Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the agenda's approved. June, will you do a quick review of old action items, please?
We had three items left from the June 22nd meeting. They had to do with pre-K enrollment, and those items should be in, including a deep data dive on 6th grade from summer school, and those should be in the Friday update. Ms. Holiday Scott and I have talked about this, and we have this material ready for Friday. She's finalizing that material.
Did you say 6th grade?
It's the deep data dive that we requested on 6th grade students from the June 8th meeting.
Okay, I thought you said summer school. I did request summer school survey data.
Yes, and we are working with Mr. Rand to have that in this Friday's update.
Okay, thank you.
And so were there any other outstanding agenda? Wow.
Items.
Action items?
Actually, there were two from the June 8th. Those are the survey data from summer school that Mr. Rand is working on, and the three from the 22nd that Ms. Holiday Scott has on her desk, that she is finalizing that material for the Friday update.
Perfect, okay, great, thank you. All right, well with that, we'll roll right into public comment, and we have two guests tonight. So we'll start with Ms. Erica Anderson. Are you in the, there you are, hi. Welcome. You'll have, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yep, she'll share it with us. All right, Ms. Anderson, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Erica Anderson, and I am a product of Kansas City Public School District, Southwest Class of 99. Seventeen years ago, I moved to San Diego with the intention of learning, growing, and expanding my knowledge to eventually bring it back to Kansas City. Here I am, here to ignite the youth to the next level. Some stats show that 53% of teens are truly motivated. I founded my company, Ignite, inspiring greatness in individuals through esteem based on reasons for that, wanting to make a change and encouraging growth to the next level. In high school, I wish I had someone to personally coach me through various situations. Don't get me wrong, I have phenomenal teachers and a great parent, but I think it could have changed some things if I had more one-on-one time, especially in employment. Where was my Les Brown, Eric Thomas, or Tony Robbins? My team is here for that for our young adults. I've worked with youth varying foster, homeless, high school, probation, parole, et cetera, and I realize that team motivation is not innate, and it must be fostered and tailored to each individual. High school is where most first jobs are customer service oriented. This is where I learned how to communicate, interact, the importance of saving, but most importantly, great work ethics. Our goal is to hone these crucial skills now so that they can carry it over to build a solid foundation for the future. Some would ask, how do I measure success? I measure success by action. What have they done differently? What new goals or previous goals have they accomplished? How is their mindset, their energy? We accomplish these measurable outcomes by one-on-one coaching in small groups. We dive in by tackling frustrations, simply surrounding, I'm sorry, being a sounding board for motivation, encouragement, implementing real-world experiences, and offering advice. We are proposing our employment services to employed high school students and ones that are actively seeking employment. We have a curriculum base that will discover their personal genius, create a solid career path, assist with job placement, and provide motivation where they need to be successful. We also offer financial literacy by creating healthy relationships with money and budgeting. So ask yourself these questions. Could you have benefited from a work-first coach in high school? Do you hear teens say that they don't know what they want to be when they grow up? Or they find it hard to see past a certain age? Is social media a distraction? Are their parents or caregivers struggling to connect with teens on levels when it comes to perspective or personal responsibility? My goal is to not let social media or negative outside influences affect any more of our youth. My request of the district is to provide the contact person to create this amazing partnership. We want to begin the process of creating ignited, motivated, and workforce-ready students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, appreciate it. We're gonna give us just a second here, we're gonna try to get this, I think we got it. Good job. Got the clock working, okay, perfect. All right, our next guest is Mr. Tom Love. Welcome, sir. A newbie at this Board of Education. Appreciate you being here tonight, you'll have three minutes, as you know.
It's been a real joy to come in front of the school board for all these years. I think it's been 10 years now. I started when the school district was totally unaccredited. One of the first things that we got fixed was, I brought up in a school board meeting because I like to check into laws and find out how to get funding and help for the students. And the superintendent at the time, Dr. Green, discovered that that children, 40% of the children, were entering the school district 11 months behind. So they were entering kindergarten 11 months behind. So he was gonna put together a summer school program, and calling it kindergarten boot camp, try to get the students in for kindergarten, or summer school prior to kindergarten. So I checked the state law on that, and under larger urban districts, they had funding for anyone who wanted to enter summer school prior to kindergarten. So that happened like 10 years ago or so, nine years ago. And that's in that law that identifies the age that you have to be to begin kindergarten. And they, under larger urban districts, they allowed the superintendent to change the cutoff date from August 1st, which is the requirement throughout the state of Missouri, to October 1st if they wanted to. And immediately, because the early childhood person, well, I mean, the next day, he checked. He checked this law, I just gotta tell you. He said, I called the state the next day, called D E S I, and they found out that this was true, that you could actually get funding. And he told Dr. Green, he says, this is a no-brainer, we need to cut off the date and take it back to September 1st, as opposed, you know, as opposed to October 1st. And so 1/12th of the kids were able to get another year of maturity, which is huge. Just talk to any early childhood person, it's absolutely huge. And so, and Dr. Bedell, if I remember correctly, changed that last year, which is great, right? So we're August 1st, so the student's entering this last year. But we have third graders that are seven years old prior to August 1st that are going in, I'm sorry, going into 3rd grade this year. We have children who are six years old going into 2nd grade prior to August 1st. You have to be a minimum of six years old in Missouri to enter 1st grade. You're required to enter if you're seven years old prior to August 1st. So we have children who are literally going into 3rd grade that could just be required to enter 1st grade. And you know what? They were automatically promoted. 100% of the 100 children who were four years old were automatically put into 1st grade, and the law said they were supposed to complete it, which is the Missouri standards for kindergarten. And it's Section 2.
Thanks, Mr. Love, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well with that being said, we're gonna invite our good friend, Ms. Angie Lyle, to the podium to represent our district advisory council. Ms. Lyle, welcome, you'll have six minutes.
Good evening, Ford and Dr. Bedell. I just wanted to highlight the shirt that I'm wearing. This is the Leadership in Training shirt that the speakers got from the Student Leadership Conference that happened a couple of months ago. And we have some nice sponsors on the back, including the district advisory committee. So I just wanted to give a shout out to all the students. I was one of the speakers, and we had a really good time. And I thought there was a really good turnout from that event. So I just wanted to say thanks again for the opportunity to give this report tonight on behalf of the District Advisory Committee for Kansas City Public Schools. My name is Angie Lyle, I'm a parent at Lincoln College Prep, and I serve as the newly re-elected DAC Executive Board Chair. Our board came together for the first time to meet each other and set some main objectives and some meeting dates. We elected our officer positions as follows. I am the Chair, Angie Lyle. Vice Chair is Dion Lewis. Recording Secretary is Manuel Clark. Corresponding Secretary, Amanda Trout. Treasurer, Christian Barnett. Parliamentarian, Steve Burton, who's also here this evening. And our Member-at-Large is Omari Tatum. As part of that initial meeting, we decided that our board would be meeting on the 3rd Thursday of each month, and that our meetings would be in-person on even-numbered months and hybrid on odd-numbered months. DACX Board meetings are held here in the Board of Education building when we're in-person, and we welcome any of the board to join us at any time. We agreed together for the purpose of a primary goal for the new year was to make sure that our district was following specific policy with regards to ensuring that every school has a parent engagement organization, whether it's PTA, PTO, SAC, et cetera. To get that discussion started, we are pleased to report that we've already had a meeting between our new executive board, Dr. Collier, Dr. Davis, and board member Jennifer Wolfsee, and we were able to agree upon three key priorities for the year. Our DACX will welcome a visit from Dr. Collier at each of our DACX Board meetings for a brief check-in and update regarding our priorities throughout the year. Our DACX will be provided with digital communication support to strengthen and build our parent and community conversations through DAC. This has already started, I appreciate that, we all appreciate it, actually. This includes emails, social media, more robust video library to help communicate our strengths, our resources, and our accomplishments. Our DACX will work together with Dr. Collier to make sure that there is an equitable system at each school that provides for parents to come together and receive the resources they need to make their experience a positive one. This means ensuring that each school has a parent organization, even if it's appointed by the administration as a parent liaison. We will also be working to make sure that we have a direct line of communication to the parent or liaison for each school. We still have more planning to do. We'll be holding our annual retreat on July 29th, 2022. We'll be here all day, and maybe a second day, working through a more detailed list of priorities, and we'll also be deciding our schedule for the year's general meetings. As usual, we invite all of our board members and Dr. Collier to join us at our DAC general meetings as this is a great way to network with parents from all the schools. We'll be sure to extend that invitation once we have our dates set. Finally, I can't forget you, Dr. Bedell. As a parent in this district, I know, I echo many when I say you've been a true blessing to this community, and quite frankly, this city. Your candidness and bold vision have paved the way to an equitable school system for all of our Kansas City kids, and I promise, we won't let that hard work go to waste. We will continue to ride the bus to Jefferson City and demand better pay for our teachers and equal accountability for all Kansas City schools in support of this district's proposed legislative priorities, which the board will be voting on here later on tonight. We will continue to testify at City Hall for economic incentive reform that benefits our schools and families. We will continue to push for more parent and community engagement in Kansas City public schools. We wish you and your family all the best as you venture forward. Good night. Can I get a picture too? Because this is kind of like, the last time I get to address Dr. Bedell. I'm gonna do one of these kind of pictures. Okay, wave, everybody. Is he gonna come, aww. We're gonna miss you. Oh, thank you. And thanks again.
Thank you, Ms. Lyle, appreciate it. And apparently, we missed a guest, a guest that's here tonight. So we'll invite Mr. Matt Oats to the podium. Mr. Oats, welcome back, you're slightly familiar with this whole thing. So you'll have, you'll have three minutes to speak, sir.
I saw nine minutes, I was like, man, you guys really changed it up.
We like you, but no.
Okay, well, laughing is a good way to start off, you know, in this kind of situation, a little solemn. But I just wanted to come out here in front of the board, in front of administration, just give my personal thanks to Dr. Bedell for all the work that he's done here. You know, a lot of people don't remember, but when we were first interviewing Dr. Bedell, it wasn't a very popular thing to have a guy who was not previously a superintendent. It was taken a huge risk by the school board at that time. He came in, you know, knocked the community interview out, and then everybody's been a fan ever since. You know, along the way, we had many opportunities, some great laughs, some sad moments, you know, some tough moments, some frustrating moments. You know, we all look a little bit older than when we started. But, you know, I just want to express my thanks, you know, again, for you coming here, for you sticking through. I mean, pretty much by a year and a half, I was like, man, we're gonna be fighting every school district in the country, you know, to keep you, and I know, just being at, you know, like, some of the national conferences, national school board conferences, I could see people being like, hey, what's he doing? So I'm glad that you stuck with us, you saw us through the goal. When we first met in person, me and you went to Summit Bar and Grill, and we had lunch. And I told you flat out, you know, I was like, hey, if you can be here, you know, if you can be here for more than three years, I'd be happy, you know. I did my mental math, and I knew, you know, you had, you know, two kids, I was like, all right, we got them for three to four at least. But I told you, if you stay for five years, you know, and we get accreditation, they'll name a school after you. And I was serious about that, like, you know, I was desperate, so. You know, being a, yeah, yeah, no. But, you know, being a graduate of the school district and just seeing, you know, good days in the school district and some of the worst days that the school district has to have, I, you know, a lot of times, my peers are always about, hey, back in my day, we were this, we were that. And I just have to shut them down and let them know that there's never been a better time to be at Kansas City Public School, to be a student in Kansas City Public Schools. And that's thanks to you, the board, and all the people who helped make this run. So I just wanted to say thank you personally, so.
Thank you, Mr. Oats, appreciate that. Dr. Bedell, I'm sure appreciates that. And with that being said, we'll turn it over to you, Dr. Bedell.
All right. Mr. Chair, we will move to the superintendent's report. We have a video highlight put together by the team, a marketing update that will include communication RFP update and new chief marketing and communications officers announced. So we'll run the video.
Good morning to everybody in this city. It is indeed a great day for me. I could not sleep last night, I'm absolutely ecstatic about this opportunity. There's so much that needs to be done for our children, and I'm simply up to the task. We have a lot of work to do, and I think that we have the people in this district, the 2,200 to 2,500, when you add part-time employees and hourly employees, we have the personnel that do what needs to be done for the children in this city. I believe in every single one of you, I trust you, I trust my own kids in this school system, and my kids are having a phenomenal experience. And I just pray that every single kid gets a similar type of experience. and education that I would want for my own kids, and that's our goal. Our goal is to become a fully accredited school district here. And we'll see what the state does when they go and publish things. But I can tell you, you all are doing a phenomenal job. You're kicking butt. Continue to do that. Continue to believe.
I lived in 12 different homes during my time as a K-12 student, and I attended many schools, in some cases where I was in schools, three to four different schools in one particular year. And so anytime you have students who are having to deal with that, either being homeless or having to move from one school to meet, to make new friends, and then there's no stability, we know that education is the economic, is the path to economic prosperity, right? But we also know that there needs to be stability. It was my intentions to attack the way that the system has been designed and how an advantage is not necessarily being utilized to enhance the vast majority of the communities that I serve on the backs of the working-class poor in most cases. And so for me, my job as a superintendent, just no different than how you all have to represent your constituents, I have to represent the children. I have to represent the children in most cases who have been intentionally shut out of the Kansas City dream by design. This is the first time in about 30 years that KCPS has earned the points to become a fully accredited school system.
We are engaged in going out and connecting with our community. In particular, in a targeted way, we want to focus on trying to retrieve some of our students that have not returned back to our schools, but also just introducing ourselves to the community, some of the families that may not have had an opportunity.
I care about kids. I don't care if they came from a charter. I don't care if they came from a parochial school. I don't care if they dropped out of our school system. We have graduated several kids that dropped out of charter. If they live within our boundaries and they want to get their degree, KCPS will be there for them.
People's Action Committee helped organize this tournament out at Oak Park to give young men a positive environment. The Superintendent of Kansas City Missouri Public Schools joined in as well, and he's got a great jump shot, in case you didn't know. Its purpose is to reach out to at-risk kids and help them build a sense of community.
It lets our kids know that as a community, we're coming together to support them. We want our students to know that we love them. We will continue to pursue nothing but excellence in the work that we do to grow our students. We want to grow them. We want to see proficient and advanced rates increase. We want to see more opportunities. I cannot express to you how I feel right now, because it's not about me. It never was about me. It's about this city. Now, let's get out here. We celebrate now. We roll our sleeves up. And we gotta get back to work, because we owe that to our kids. Congratulations to everybody in here. You have played a role in this school district's receiving its full accreditation. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Let's celebrate, but let's get back to work. Thank you, everybody. This is the first graduating class since 2000 to graduate in a fully accredited Kansas City Public School District.
So, perfect segue, Dr. Bedell. So the board really wanted to do something for you in addition. And I know you've had, you know, we've celebrated, this whole city has really celebrated you, right? And I don't know what that feels like, but it's gotta be an amazing experience. But we wanted to send you away with a little token of appreciation from the board. If you don't like it, blame June. She got it. If you do like it, credit the board. But it's a token of appreciation. And I'll keep it brief, because again, you and I have had dinner. Jen Woolsey put together a great barbecue for you this past weekend. But I do want to say, you know, again, that your commitment, you know, and your heart for our kids. You know, I wish I would have had you as a superintendent when I was in KCPS. I've grown to really love you as a man. I'm looking forward, I mean, you know, I'm really looking forward to us becoming friends, where we don't have this whole boss-and-employee relationship thing going on. But I really do, you have a really special place in my heart. And I think that it will take really probably decades for this community to really fully appreciate how you laid an incredibly solid foundation by which we can build upon. And if we stay steady and we, you know, leverage your words and the way you thought about educating our kids and the purpose behind each thing that this district does to make sure that our kids have an equitable opportunity to a quality education, then I think we'll be fine for a long time to come. So thank you for everything that you've done for this district. And then I'll just open it up to other board members. If you want to say something, great. And we've got Dr. Jones and Ms. Ford online as well. If you ladies would like to say something, please chime in. Understand if not, because we've all, I think, done some version of this at this point, anyway. Okay. Well, thank you, Dr. Bedell. Appreciate you.
So I'm tearing up up here because last night was my last night to play basketball with the students, and it was one of the things that got me connected to the community, coming in early and just going around and trying to figure out how I can fit in and just let people know that I'm a regular person. Don't get fooled by the suits and the media and the news interviews and all of that. I'm just a regular dude, just trying to make a difference. And I messed up my shoulder last night. I was supposed to be in a sling. I didn't, I just didn't wear it, because I didn't want to have everybody asking me what happened. And we were at Anderson. A number of kids from Southeast High School. We had some charter kids in there last night. We had some alumni that graduated. And after I messed up my shoulder, I asked everybody to come into the center, because I was gonna go home and just try to figure out what's wrong with this. And I said, and I said to all of these youngsters, it's amazing how we can all come in here on this basketball court in fellowship, and we got people in here from different parts of the city, right? Your zip code, your set, none of that matters. When we come in here, there's a code on how we should behave. But when we leave out of here, there's a different code in how we treat each other in our community. And I said to them that all I've ever wanted to do was to leverage the sport that I love to try to create a sense of community. But the school district can't do it by itself. Like, the only way we're gonna fix this community is it's gotta be through you all. Like, you all gotta say enough is enough. You all gotta demand more out of the school district. You gotta demand more out of city council. You gotta demand more out of the county. And we're not doing it. And so I said, I just, I said, what it does is it break you down, right? In these urban school districts, there's a reason why it's only 3.2 years of tenure, because your health just can't sustain the constant barrage of so many factors that truly can be fixed and controlled by the community. So I said, we just gotta build a sense of community. And we gotta leverage basketball or whatever it is you love to build that sense of community, because community holds community accountable. Community holds everybody else accountable when the community's together. And I, and I'm thankful that I was able to do that last night. And I had several of them say, give me your number. I'd love to be able to stay in contact with you. But it goes back to what you just said, Mr. Hogan. I just care, I care about the underdog, the people who always, always get looked at through a deficit lens. And that's been this school district for a long time. And even with us having our accreditation, it still is. It still is. People are gonna always find a narrative to speak negatively, but nobody, right? Where are all of these people fighting against the conditions that create all of the social and emotional distress? It can't just be us. And you can't just say, I'm gonna look at data and just beat you up on data when there are so many other factors that contribute to why the data looks the way that it looked. You gotta get to the root cause. And if you don't do that, it's not going to be significant improvement. It's not going to happen. So I just, I'm thankful. Thank you all for believing in me. Thank you all for trusting me, all of these, all of you that's out here, all of my friends. And all I want, I just want these kids to have a fair shot. And I know we have the people here to take that mantle and move it on. And I'll be going into new challenges. And it's gonna be hard, because there's no easy superintendency. But I'll be experiencing new challenges. And I'm looking forward to the next journey of just continuing to follow you all, continue to learn from you all while I continue to grow as a leader. So thank everybody. Thank you all. We want to get through this board meeting so we can enjoy our night. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Barca. Oh, so you guys do want to say something now? Mr. Barca.
Where to start, man? Doc, you're inspiring from the day that you stepped on the stage, interviewing to the public for the community session. I think I walked out and talked to some news source about how you're the man, and everyone should pick you, and it's great. And from that point, you have done nothing but continuously inspire. Your hard work is clearly evident. Thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for inspiring me to do things that I didn't think I would do, want to do. Thanks for making me take on that debt. But also for showing me the reality of Latino impact in the educational landscape and the realities of it is hard to find good leaders. I wrote a little statement, because I think this is important and encapsulates your impact. The greatest impact a leader can make is the wake of other leaders growing behind them. That is so true for you and the people that are here and the people you've poured into that have gone already. That is the true impact that you're leaving here in Kansas City. And I hope we do name a school after you at some point in time. I look forward to carrying that on for Matt Oats.
Ms. Woolsey.
Okay, I have another little gift. And then I'll say a little something to go with it. Yeah, we haven't... So this is just a picture of the three boards that Dr. Bedell served with during his time in Kansas City. And we did, I tried my hardest to get every person to sign it. I've still got maybe two left that I will get for you. But just as a reminder, and I did prepare a little something. I'm not gonna get mushy and emotional, and I said I wasn't gonna cry at that video, and I did. But instead, I'd just like to read a few of the things that we were able to accomplish, the folks in that picture that you're looking at, because you did remain steadfastly focused on students, and you did not allow an adult-centered agenda to move us off course. So, and this is a shortlist, folks. Equity Policy 0.0. You asked, like, right when you got here, and it took us a while, but we did finally get there. Equity Budgeting. Systems Analysis and Ed Landscape Study of Kansas City area. The Education Collaboration Guidelines that came out of that in process, which established the Office of Education Collaboration, which has actually been a big leader here in Kansas City. Also helping to synthesize the cooperating school districts of greater Kansas City around some various issues. The Middle College Program, which I know you are extremely proud of, and it's just been growing every year, over year. Implementing AVID at our secondary schools. Expansion of college-level courses at all of our high schools. Navigating through a global pandemic and the complete shutdown of schools, including a year of virtual and hybrid. Of course, the highest accreditation scores and the return of full accreditation. And the one that's nearest and dearest to my heart, continuously advocating for reasonable use of tax incentives and economic development. The list does go on and on. And to me, this is the mark of a true leader, someone who uses their influence to make the world a better place for all. And you, Dr. Bedell, have done not only that for KCPS, but for Kansas City as well, and for that, we are forever grateful.
All right, I think we're good.
I'm sorry. So at this time, we will bring Ms. Holiday Scott up, who will provide the marketing update to the board and the community.
Okay, yes, we are going to include the board marketing update. There are just two brief items to update, not a full report since marketing did report in June. But the first is an update regarding the Request for Proposal Regarding Public Relations and Community Engagement Services. And this is surrounding our Latinx population. And just as a reminder for the board and our community, is that Kansas City does recognize that we have a Latinx segment, and it comprises 29.8% of our student population and has maintained over 27% over the last six years. And so there is a need or a desire to make sure that we are addressing that significant population of our constituency and to make sure we're doing it in an equitable manner. So that is part of the purpose for this Request for Proposal. As an update, Kansas City did, we did publish the Request for Proposal that has now closed. There were five responses. The team, there was a team of six that evaluated those proposals, and we have narrowed down to the top three. So just to let the board know, for our next steps, we will be in contact with those who have made the top three. We will be asking them for a subsequent presentation to us that would include an opportunity for an interaction with them, for them to present further their proposed items as well as to answer any questions that we may have. The further intent is to be able to narrow that top three down to a recommendation of one, and then being able to negotiate a contract with the intent and the hope that... one, and then being able to negotiate a contract with the intent and the hope that we would potentially be here by the end of August, for the August business meeting with a recommendation for this board. So that's basically where we are at this point in time. So we wanted you to know, we know it's important to you, but we wanted to keep you apprised of the status. Any questions?
Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Barca.
Can you tell us when again that you anticipate the timeline being definitive for that implementation occurring?
We, we would like to be able to schedule those presentations for, towards the end of next week, to give them an opportunity to, for notification and response to us. But we would like to be able to negotiate a contract, and potentially for us to present a recommendation in the, the August business meeting. So, that is the intent, and that we, that's what we hope to do.
Okay, thank you.
So, for the next item for the marketing update, is for us to be able to share with you, and of course, with the public, and we know the board already knows. But there is going to be a new chief of marketing and communications. The board has approved the employment of Ms. Esperanza Soriano McCrery. She goes by Hope as a first name. And just a little bit about her for our community, is that Hope is a skillful communicator in both English and in Spanish, who uses her creative strategically to build relationships with communities and teams. She has experience and worked extensively in the area of education. Currently, she is working with the Tennessee State Department of Education as the chief communications and external affairs. So we are looking forward to her joining Kansas City in the near future, and it, for the next probably marketing update, you may be seeing her instead of me. But, any other questions?
Not seeing any. Thank you, Ms. Holiday Scott, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that concludes the superintendent's report.
All right, well, we'll move right into the board of directors' report, and to our treasurer, Mr. Mania Barca, for the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Keep the report kinda brief today. As we are ending our fiscal year, we are rectifying some of these numbers, and so it's important to, to denote the un-audited top right-hand corner of things, as they begin to rectify the accounts and close out and collect final revenues. Some of these things may vary and change as, as we move into the next fiscal year. So as we look at this information again here, we're just looking at our revenues and expenditures as we have collected everything thus far. Moving on to the next slide, looking at our local revenues. Thank you to our taxpayers for being at 100, 100% of our current property taxes coming in. So we, as projected, have met that goal and threshold. So that is a positive thing. Thank you for all those who are committed to the future of education here at KCPS. We are at a total of 98% collected revenues in total. So we are, we are very much right on budget as projected when it comes to revenues. Looking at the county and state funds, in May, the state allowed for additional funding to our charter school colleagues, and thus, they increased the funding to charter schools under revenue line. As we look at our federal revenues as well, reimbursements are still in process, so remaining balances will come, become carryover into our fiscal year '23. Looking at our pie chart here, you can see again, local revenues are our lion's share of our budget revenues. The federal pie piece has definitely grown because of some of our ESR dollars, and so that will constantly adjust as we look at different fiscal years. I believe, excuse me, we have an ESR deadline for some spent money, so that may change as we look at the next fiscal year's budgeting pie piece here for revenues. Looking at our expenditures, salary and benefits are still due and payable to staff, so some of these line items will, will be changing. As you look along the right-hand side, again, we should be around the 100% of expenditures at this point, and just tracking where we are in the process. And so some of these lines you'll see could be modified as we talk about next year's fiscal budget, right? I think this was a topic of discussion during Finance Committee at one point, as we kind, kinda get a little tighter in some of these areas that may show currently 48, 55, 31% of target. So that is something that the Finance Committee, as well as the CFO side, will, will take care of. So looking at purchase services, again, modifying some of these as we have more expenses coming into the books and, and the accounts being closed, but we are around 66% at this point of total expenses. So moving on to our supplies and materials slide here. Accounts payable, again, still pending, so there will be some payouts that'll close out this fiscal year, and do our best to make sure that these line items are spent down. Again, as we move into the next fiscal year, it is incredibly important to look at some of these supplies lines, because as you can see, the end of the fiscal year, we are at 63% of budgeted for some supplies, 51% for student incentives. These are areas where we have been refocusing to make sure that we maximize the opportunities here, as teachers rush out to go and buy school supplies for their classrooms. There are funds for these, and as you can see, balance remaining of $9,200,000 is a pretty significant amount of dollars to leave on the table. So we will, again, hopefully, Dr. Collier's not here in the room at the moment, but between the rest of the staff, try and push to make sure that these expense lines are certainly maximized, to get these resources into the classrooms. Looking at our capital outlay, capital projects are still ongoing, and will, will some will roll over into our fiscal year '23. Looking at our total expenses pie chart, moving on to the next slide. You'll see salary and benefits are, again, continue to be one of our largest expenditures, but the rest of the breakdown is as such. Moving on to our investments, again, reminding the, the public that the way that we operate is we receive tax dollars at certain periods of time, and so we are cash-rich at some points, so we invest to make sure that during our cash-poor timeframes, we are able to cover our expenses. And so currently, our three securities are maturing during the June timeframe for a total value of $20 million UMB reported at month-end, increased $2.7 million. So our investments are maturing and making money, which will help cover us during our cash flow low times. So with that, Mr. Chair, we are open for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barca. Questions from the board? Ms. Cortez?
I just, it's just a quick comment. I appreciate the report. The last few months, there've been some footnote, there's been some footnoting that I think has been helpful to the public to understand some of the complexities of our budget, and I'd encourage that we think about doing that in the future.
More robust notes duly noted.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Kulkmeier.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Barbara Lunn. She is working directly with Erin Thompson on budget and finance. Thank you, Barbara.
Welcome. Barbara's like, I wanna sit down.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, can I, can I say one thing? Because I was remiss and not present during last month's meeting, I have to say thank you to Linda Quinley, who is obviously not here, who did a tremendous job preparing me to do this type of report today, somewhat off cuff. So she's not here, she's probably not even watching. I hope she's not doing anything KCPS-related, but sincere thanks to her and the team.
Absolutely. All right, I think we're good. Thank you again, Mr. Barca, for that report. And we'll move into ad hoc committee reports, and we'll start off with our committee chair, Ms. Buckner, for the Communications and Community Engagement Committee.
Hello. So tomorrow is our next meeting, tomorrow, July 12th at 5:30. We plan to review edits to the board policy manual, and then also plan for a town hall that is to be determined. We want administration to have the opportunity to get their eyes on it and give some feedback on those edits. Also, August 4th at 5:30, we had a brief discussion, an exec session, about the community kind of weighing in on, just giving feedback on a process for a superintendent search. The conversation was really about how do we get constituents in on the process earlier? And so just to provide a level of transparency that I think is needed with such a fantastic superintendent leaving us, you know, folks wanna be involved in this process. And so we really wanna make sure that we involve folks and are transparent as early as possible. And so with that, August 4th, 4th at 5:30, we plan to host a meeting, just to talk about the process in general. And then lastly, after Angie Lyle came up here, I just remembered that we, as a board, we need to get the list of dates of the upcoming DAC meetings for the '22, '23 school year, so that we can have board representation. And so I just wanted to put that on our radar.
That one sounds like a good action item. You got it? All right. Looking for confirmation there, okay.
That's it, thanks.
Yeah, any questions for Ms. Buckner? Nope, okay, thank you, appreciate that. And we'll move over to our committee chair for the Government Relations Committee, Ms. Wolfsey.
Thank you, Chairman Hogan. Okay. So tonight, at the last board meeting in June, we presented the draft of the 2023 state legislative priorities. We wanted to give, I asked DACX, the executive committee, to review them. I asked my board member buddies to also review them. And just to remind everybody why this is coming a little bit earlier than we usually do, because we typically don't approve our legislative priorities until the fall, late fall. But we had some momentum coming out of the last session that we would like to take advantage of, and so we wanted to go ahead and approve or adopt our legislative priorities this summer, so that we can work with legislators on if there are things that we actually wanna be proactive on, and try to write bill legislation, line up sponsors, that sort of thing. So I will, I'm gonna just briefly go over them, because I know that they've been out in the public realm, but I, I wanna make sure that everybody knows what the 2023 legislative priorities are. Some of these will sound very familiar, because they do pretty much carryover from the previous year. So the first one is around teacher compensation, where we will be supporting legislation and funding designed to provide compensation for Missouri public school teachers that is competitive, livable, and differentiated, with the goal of attaining additional financial supports for teachers working in hard-to-fill roles. The next area is transparency and accountability, and this is the one that I think we'll actually be able to make some headway with this next year. For those of you that maybe don't follow what's going on over the summertime, there was a Senate interim ed committee meeting, and they, the, they're meeting, I think, every month before they get into session. This first one was mostly around MSIP and MSIP VI in particular. But the next one is going to, I think, focus a lot around transparency and accountability, so I think that's why we're gonna see some movement on this, particularly next year. So in that area, we would support legislation and the enforcement of statutes that ensure parents and taxpayers the ability to adequately navigate educational systems in charter counties by providing for the full equitable treatment in public education accountability, transparency, flexibility, and resource distribution. The third one, and this one was added this year, was pre-K support. We will be supporting legislation and funding designed to expand early childhood education across the state of Missouri, specifically around advocating for the pre-K funding and the Missouri Foundation formula, and for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to provide universal programming that ensures consistency and kindergarten readiness statewide. And the fourth one was actually a transfer over from the previous years, but is around the Hancock Amendment, and supporting legislation that moves the Kansas City public school system under the Hancock Amendment to assure protections for property owners and public schools from sudden and significant changes in assessed valuation. This one is really one that's gonna require a couple of years, and so you'll most likely see it for the next couple of years, until we're actually able to make some progress on these. So at this time, I would like to, the Government Relations Committee would like to put forth these state legislative priorities for the 2023 legislative session, and take, oh, I'll let you ask that question.
Yeah, no worries. Any questions from the board? Thank you, Ms. Wolfsey, for that. Mr. Barca.
Where did we end up when we talked about the conversation with the teachers' union about the differentiated pay scale?
And I guess that's a question for Dr. Bedell, Dr. Collier, and I don't know, Ms. Wolfsey, if we got anything necessarily from committee?
Yeah, I'm not certain that we have moved on that at, at the rate that we need to move on it, but part of it is, there are a number of things that need to happen at the state level first, and if you don't get the red light to make those moves at the state level, we can't even begin to engage deeply here on it. I think, um, there's an appetite to sit at the table and figure it out. It's not, it's not like closed out. There's definitely an appetite, we just have to figure out, you know, at together, how we would wanna make that work. And, yeah, I know the union would prefer to keep everything pretty much standardized, and that, that has been our conversation in the past. I don't know, Dr. Collier, if there's anything you can add to what I'm just saying, I think that's where we are with it at this point.
I think that's my only concern about this, and I expressed it, I think, during committee and, and so forth, is I think some consider this union busting, and the state that we're in right now, in terms of needing teachers all over, there is need for teachers anywhere and everywhere. And so a differentiated pay scale could be exacerbated, in my opinion, in some degree to mean a bad thing. And so I worry about that, but otherwise, I know we did some great work around some of these other issues, so.
Now, if I could, Ms. Ms. Wolfsey, that, I agree with your statement on that, because there are a number of states that offer those types of incentives. If you're a board-certified teacher, there are some states where that's a $10,000 addition on top of your salary, so you are incentivized to go get your board certification. And so it's just not something that's, at this point, been pushed here in the state of Missouri, but could become a big part of, of the future of how we advocate at the legislative
I guess I wanna just address two things. First, I wanna thank Ms. Wolfsey for, and, and really, Dr. Bedell and his team for kind of continuing to lead us in these legislative priority discussions. I think they are critical, and there are always curveballs in the legislative process, so being able to at least go in knowing where to, where to try to be focused and consistent is really critical. So I wanna thank you, Ms. Wolfsey, for really guiding us through this process. But I do wanna address Mr. Barca's comment. My concern is that if you're precluded from ever having the conversation, you don't know where it can lead. And so I think the challenge in the state of Missouri is that we can't even open the door to a conversation about what would best serve our kids. So at the end of the day, I have great confidence that the union will do its, its superb job of representing its constituents, and the school district will do a superb job of representing the interests of our kids, and will find a place along that continuum. But as long as we're precluded from even having that as a, as a legitimate conversation, I think that's problematic. So I think anything that gives us the ability to be creative and competitive is something we at least need to understand the choices that we're making. So I, I think it's really important that it be in there.
All right, Ms. Wolfsey.
Well, I had, yeah, oh, do you want, I, I thought I did make the motion, but then we went into questions.
No, I just opened it up for questions, so.
Okay, okay. I just, the Government Relations Committee recommends these 2023 Kansas City Public Schools' state legislative priorities for adoption.
Submuted.
Second.
Ms. Kulkmeier, will you please call the role?
Mr. Barca.
Yes.
Ms. Buckner.
Yes.
Ms. Cortez.
Yes.
Ms. Ford.
Yes.
Dr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes, the motion passes. Ms. Wolfsey.
Thank you, Chairman Hogan. I have another item that I just want to give an update on. If I could have Ms. Pointer come to the podium. We would like to, I know that the board received, there had been a letter that we, as the, or Dr. Bedell, as the Kansas City Public Schools issued to the Kansas City Area Transportation Authority. So if you, if you wouldn't mind giving an update on that letter that went and the subsequent response.
Sure. Also, sorry for my face. I probably shouldn't have worn mascara today. So you all received a copy of the letter that Dr. Bedell sent to the KCATIA regarding their movements into the economic development space. We first learned about it last summer through seeing it on a board agenda. We approached them for conversations. We had conversations with them about what that could look like, what partnership could look like. As they moved in economic development, we shared, you know, our thoughts around all of that. But for the last several months, we have not received communication from them despite asking for meetings to understand their policy. They have started to move projects forward without briefing us on them. This is a sharp deviation from how any of the other economic development agencies in town operate. Even ones where we don't always agree with them do brief us on projects before they move them forward to their boards. So KCATIA has started to move projects forward to their board without briefing us, which was the impetus for Dr. Bedell to write the letter. And so I just wanted to come up here. If you all had any questions, those projects will go for a final vote to their main board next Wednesday. We still have not been briefed on them.
Mr. Barca.
Wow. I think they just had a change in their direction in terms of their leadership, too, right? So there's a whole new thing happening, KCATIA.
Yes.
I guess my question around this is, are we looking to see them playing more as Port KC? Are they, so they're going to become a group that operates sometimes outside of the council actions, the council governance, and their taxing jurisdiction, right? They receive public tax dollars?
They do. So one of the things that has been concerning to Dr. Bedell and staff is they will operate like the port. They see their authority similarly through conduit bonding. Their board, however, this is a deviation from the port, is not entirely appointed by the mayor. There are people on their board from other cities and states, which is concerning that those folks will have input over our potential revenues.
Ms., oh, Mr. Barca.
Are we considering legal action at any point? Because, I mean, you got some taxation without representation questions as well for folks who don't serve this district governing tax dollars.
I cannot answer that question.
Just some options, I think, as we think about this.
Ms. Wolfsey.
Well, I just, I think the reason I asked Ms. Pointer to come up was to provide context about the fact that another agency has entered into the alphabet city soup. It seemed we had been making progress as the public school district with those agencies and the governing body for those agencies. And, you know, had relationships that seemed to be working, you know, maybe not always to our way we want them, but, and then to have another agency just completely pop up that can then, you know, usurp our tax dollars. Remind this body one more time, I mean, not, you don't have to be exact, but the number that always sticks in my head was that we were roughly losing 37 million in incentives a year. Now, we would not get all of those revenues always because we would maybe agree to a number of those. But this just means that we have another agency that will have the authority to grant incentives, meaning that that number can just begin to increase. And for me, my perception was, prior to us entering kind of this world and trying to force some discussions about how it was working, it seemed a bit like whack-a-mole, you know, with incentives and people incentive shopping. And that kind of settled down, not completely, but it was better. And now we have another opportunity, another hole, essentially.
Yes, and I'll note that this agency, similar to the Port Authority, which isn't under the umbrella of the EDC, will not be doing an independent financial analysis. They will be doing an in-house financial analysis, which is also how the port operates.
I, I, did you have something? Well, I, point well taken. I would say that the city council doesn't necessarily listen to the financial analysis anytime, anyway. So, yes, I agree. I wish there was some obligation, or at least a real commitment from the council to actually leverage that information to do incentives that are in the best interest of the city as a whole. So I appreciate the context. You know, the thing that was concerning most to me about the back and forth is then the mayor decided to chime in and, and send an email. And I've not seen a complex problem, particularly in the political realm, that is solved by way of email and letters going back and forth, right? And so I think that's guidance for everybody. I mean, you can fire the letters back and forth. At the end of the day, though, when do the leaders get in a room together, right, and work through these things as opposed to the electronic communication? It's just, it's problematic from, from the terms of trying to like sit down and really find areas where we can work together and collaborate on these things. I mean, I would encourage the mayor to go spend more time working on getting the scorecard done and push through the council because that could have some meet and create some agreement that is well-publicized and everyone understands what the rules are in this space. So, yeah, it's just, it's unfortunate to see a group of city leaders sort of kind of interact in that way. Dr. Bedell.
Yeah, I think the concerning part of regarding KCATIA's responses were pretty much inflammatory to me to say that they've met with us. They met with us one time when they were in the process of starting this. It's the only time we've met with them. And at that meeting, I was assured that this would be the equalizer that would really let taxing jurisdictions like KCPS be at the table. Next thing I know, there are four projects that have moved through. We have no information. We have no briefing. All four of the projects, not a single one of them, East of Truths, which is already a major problem for us because that's what we've been fighting for, trying to get the two to be utilized to enhance East of Truths, which has been redlined out. We, I'll keep saying that over and over and over again. And we still get limited economic development on that side of town. And to make the letter appear that the school district is being, what was the word?
Emotional, the word emotional has come up.
Right. Like, we're, we're having an emotional reaction to this. When we've been fighting for this for, since 2016, and even before I got here, we've been fighting for this, you know, I take offense to that, right? Because then you can really look at that from a micro, microaggression standpoint of what, what they're actually saying about who the letter is coming from. And I have a problem with that. So, you know, we, my schedule permits. And I always tell my board, you know, we, I won't do anything to ever embarrass you all, but I have no problem going to their board meeting to take that on head up, to address it, if that's where we need to go to set the record straight. Because nothing we put in our letter was false and nothing in there was misleading around this process.
And I just want to note really quick to follow up on a couple of your points, Mr. Hogan. I do think I expect to see some, some news around advanced KC in the coming, in the next couple of weeks at council. Whatever the city council decides to do, KCATIA will not have to follow. So, just a note.
Yeah, not, not surprising, I guess, given the current state. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, Dr. Bedell, we'll turn it over to you for regular business items.
All right, we have several today to go through. The first one is C1, School Smart KC. The administration recommends approval of the contract regarding emerging partner status with the pre-K Cooperative at no cost to the school district.
Questions? Okay, all right. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the contract between School Smart KC regarding emerging partner status with the pre-K Cooperative?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca.
Yes.
Ms. Buckner.
Yes.
Ms. Cortez.
Yes.
Ms. Ford.
Yes.
Dr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes, the motion passes.
Thank you. Item number two, the administration recommends approval of the renewal of the Microsoft 365 licenses for a three-year cost of $544,324.65.
Questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the expenditures for the annual renewal of Microsoft 365 licenses? Some moved. Is there a second?
Second.
June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca.
Yes.
Ms. Buckner.
Yes.
Ms. Cortez.
Yes.
Ms. Ford.
Yes.
Ms., Dr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Definitely not Dr. Hogan. Yes, the motion passes.
Item number three, Worldwide Technology. The administration recommends approval to purchase Dell Chromebooks and HP laptops for grades K through 12. These will replace older equipment and damaged student devices. Expenditures amounting to $3,740,000 will be reimbursed by FCC through Universal Services Administrative Company with the federal grant Emergency Connected Connectivity Fund.
Questions? Ms. Cortez.
So I think I had telegraphed this, this question in advance. This is really, and I don't know that it needs to be addressed tonight, but I at least want to understand how we are going to gain a deeper understanding. A number of years ago, when we went through a kind of spate of major technology purchases, we had an extended discussion around how, how we were managing, what I'm going to call shrinkage, damage and shrinkage. And that conversation kind of died out. Not, I don't think the board has an understanding of kind of what, what should our expectations be in terms of how we, how we manage that, that group of devices and how we can reduce our shrinkage rate? So I don't know if you want to address that.
Thank you for sending that question to us in advance. And what we plan to do is put a document into your Friday update that will articulate what that plan will look like, what the process will look like, what the actual percentage is. I believe we're probably somewhere around 17% at this point of devices that we are not able to account for with not either, either being completely returned or not, or not returned, or not, or non-reparable. So we'll put that in there. And then we have spoken with Mr. Vasquez to make sure that there is some way that we are able to follow up with an accountability on what's happening with the inventory.
Could we maybe add to that, Dr. Bedell or Mr. Vasquez, what, what the industry standard is? I mean, 17% in my head seems really, really high, but it may not be based on other urban school districts. So if there's a way to get to some of that data, I think it'd be interesting to see it.
I think that's a great question, and I do remember sharing this with the board. This was a conversation we had as superintendents with the Council for Great City Schools. And there were a number of districts that basically put in 25% that they add into their budget because of lost devices, the devices that kids tear up that they can't pay for. And that was kind of the rate that was about a year ago or so. But it'd be good to figure out what the, you know, what the actual data is and data looks like now.
Great, thank you. Any other questions on this one? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the expenditures to purchase Dell Chromebook and HP laptops for grades K through 12? Some moved. Is there a second?
Second.
June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca.
Yes.
Ms. Buckner.
Yes.
Ms. Cortez.
Yes.
Ms. Ford.
Yes.
Dr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes, the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number four, the administration is seeking approval of an agreement with City Year for a two-year contract in the amount of $1,325,000. This, the services will be rendered to six schools, Central Middle, Central High, East High School, Northeast Middle, Northeast High, and Whittier Elementary.
Questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Ford.
I'm curious to know, is there, is there any data or metrics that City Year is capturing that could be shared with the board to kind of speak to the impact they've been making, at least, you know, the last year? I'm not questioning the impact at all, but I think it will be something that's helpful for the board to see for such a large contract.
Yes, we have a 2020, 2021 Impact Report that has highlighted the number of hours, 56,000 hours or so utilized. We had about 747 students that received one-on-one tutoring and mentoring. We saw that 43% of our students tutored in English, improved their grades from a failing grade with D and an F, all the way up to an A, B, or C. And, and there's a number of other items that are available here, Ms. Ford, that we can provide to you. But the, the piece that I think would truly allow for us to have even a higher degree of reliability is when those MAP scores come in and we're able to tie in the students that were working, that were directly assigned to work with City Year students. And that probably will also give you more of a picture of how that impact has played out from a state assessment standpoint. But we can provide this holistic report, support report, in the Friday update for you all.
I will be, thank you.
We also have iReady data on those individual students, right? Okay.
Yeah, Ms. Wolfsey.
I know in the past that after that map data comes in, that usually, I believe, City Year will do an assessment on ABC attendance behavior coursework because they can, they drill down, there's a little bit of matching that has to go on and they can give, get real specific. So it just may be a function of that data's not available yet.
And we have our City Year counterpart, Jeff, in the back, so he's hearing all of this. But these are things that we also met with City Year about several years ago around those metrics that we want to, want to be able to see some correlation to justify us continuing the partnership.
It's funny that you mentioned Jeff Schaefer because I was going to say we could certainly put him in the hot seat, which, which I personally would enjoy seeing. Any other questions on this City Year one? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the agreement with City Year? Some moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca.
Yes.
Ms. Buckner.
Yes.
Ms. Cortez.
Yes.
Ms. Ford.
Yes.
Dr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes, the motion passes.
Item number five, Yellow Dog Networks. The administration recommends approval of the renewal of firewall internet security from Yellow Dog Networks in the amount of $426,991.
Questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the expenditures for renewal of firewall internet security from Yellow Dog Networks? Some moved.
Second.
All right, June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca.
Yes.
Ms. Buckner.
Yes.
Ms. Cortez.
Yes.
Ms. Ford.
Yes.
Dr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes, the motion passes.
Item number six is the Greater KC Link in KCPS caring communities. The administration recommends approval of the agreement to provide before and after-school care that is affordable and accessible out of, out of school time enrichment during the 22, 2022, 2023 regular school year and summer school program for a total cost of $580,530 plus in-kind donation of $450,000.
Questions?
I had a question.
Oh, who, wait, who was that from? Oh, hey, Dr. Jones. You spoke from the heavens. Go ahead.
Yes, maybe a year or so ago, I asked whether or not we had some way of determining whether the folks who work for KC Link were being paid the $15 an hour. Just wanted to know if that's something we could also get in the update, like what is their minimum salary? As I know we've made some changes in KCPS, just wanted to make. salary, as I know we've made some changes in KCPS. Just wanted to make sure that the other ladies and gentlemen who are working for our kids are receiving the same.
Okay, Dr. Jones, yeah, we'll, we'll take a look into that and have that answer for you on Friday.
Thank you.
And June's capturing.
I have a question also, sorry.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Ms. Ford.
Uh, similar to my City Year question, just any data or metrics that you have from Link as well, specifically if there's any metrics that they have related to academic outcomes. I think that that would be great and helpful to share with the board. And then also, is there anything that we are able to do to ensure consistency from site to site with the Link program?
All right, so I think we can look at the consistency part from site to site. I'm not certain, Ms. Ford, on how we're going to be able to extrapolate their impact from a data standpoint, because, I mean, their before and after-school care, I think there's a lot of different activities that the kids are involved in, but I'm not certain we can, we can accurately tie in their impact from, from a student data standpoint, assessment standpoint.
Okay. No, and the reason why I asked that is in their contract with some of the things that they are providing, it mentioned some of the academic stuff, so I didn't know if it was any data that they, they had or could speak to.
Let me bring my expert up that works directly with Link, because, yeah, that might help out.
Hi, yes. So, Link in their contracts, some of the stuffs they do, they do through their caring community sites is they provide before and after-school tutoring, and they also provide opportunities for students, such as they have some chess clubs, they do girls on the run, some of those kinds of activities that are extracurricular for students. But the tutoring that they do, it's a, like a homework-help time, where they would receive their direction from the school, and the school then would kind of guide that. It's not, they don't have a standalone program that they do for that. So, this contract actually fulfills our 10% commitment to the grant that they bring to the school district.
Any other questions? Ms. Buckner?
Yes, thinking about our push for improved customer service front, I wonder if there's any data or survey data with parent satisfaction with before and after-school care and perception data from parents.
I don't know, but I can find out. I'm sure that they do, they have some of that information that we can gather.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're good on this one, then. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of superintendent of schools for the, what? Yep. Um, I totally lost my train of thought. Is there a motion for the, to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools for the board of directors to approve the Link funding agreement with Greater KC Link, Inc. through Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education?
Some of.
Second.
All right, June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
All right, next item is the All City Management Services. The administration recommends approval of the final renewal contract for school traffic control services in the amount of 200, in the amount not to exceed $267,732. The crossing guard services ensures the safety of our students as they walk to and from school.
Questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the final renewal contract for school traffic control services with All City Management Services, Inc.?
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
Item number eight, ALC Schools LLC. The administration recommends approval of the Second Amendment for one-year extension contract of alternative transportation solutions with an estimated annual amount of $900,000 due to the need for specialized transportation services for special education students focused on strong customer service, communication, and driver slash monitor training. Administration determined that having access to such specific transportation care is critical to delivering quality service to our students and families.
Questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the Second Amendment for a one-year extension of contract C19004, Alternative Transportation Solutions with ALC Schools?
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
Next item is STA, Student Transportation of America. The administration recommends approval of the Fourth Amendment of Student Transportation Services, two-year contract in the amount of $22,500,000. STA Services has been satisfactory prior to the pandemic, and even as we've had to navigate through difficult times addressing human capital shortages, they have been very flexible in working with the school district to meet our needs to the best of their ability. And we believe executing the Fourth Amendment will allow STA to continue providing services to district students.
Mr. Barca?
Yeah, I, I guess I want to make a comment here. I think, I, I agree that the STA's done a great job. I think there's some more opportunities as we look at the competitive market of bus driving. And I've noticed the signs that have gone up at our schools seems relatively low for the per-hour compensation. And the fact that we don't provide benefits for folks is really a deterrent as we look at those opportunities. And so, that's something in the market, because everyone wants a bus driver right now, that's something we should look at. So, I'll, I'm going to support this, but I think that there's an opportunity here to maximize that we capture the best drivers that can exist, that we make sure that buses show up during athletic events, and that could be an opportunity.
All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the Fourth Amendment? It's a contract C19004, Student Transportation Services to Student Transportation of America, Inc.
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
Next item is ferrel gas propane fuel contract. The administration recommends approval of the renewal of a three-year agreement to supply propane fuel to support the district's school bus fleet. Total estimated cost is 1.7 million with a, with third-year renewal to be negotiated and agreed upon by the parties.
Questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a three-year agreement with ferrel gas for propane LPG supply?
Some of.
Second.
All right, June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, all right, we're almost there, Dr. Bedell.
All right, this is the final business item, and Dr. Collier will be up here moving forward. See, the last one is the Code of Conduct, our student handbook for 2022-2023. The administration recommends approval of the updated Code of Student Conduct to reflect changes in policies or procedures and to comply with federal and state law. Total estimated printing cost is $21,410 with pro forma brand works.
Questions? Yeah. Yeah, Ms. Cortez?
So, this is actually a, not a now-data question. This is a, when, because of the significant changes that were made last year, if, when Dr. Woodley's team does their policy update, if we could get some kind of feedback on the impact of those Code of Conduct changes. I think that would be really valuable, not tonight, but just a future request about how we can get that feedback.
Yes, Ms. Cortez.
Mr., you can't resist. Mr. Barca?
I think we should consider making sure that we're using printers that are paying a livable wage, just a comment.
Make sure the printers we're using for stuff like this are paying a livable, a living wage, or livable wage. All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the Code of Student Conduct Handbook for the 22-23 school year?
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes. All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some of.
Second.
All right, June, will you please call the roll?
Waiting for the computer to catch up with me.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
If I vote no, does that mean that Dr. Bedell has to stay up here?
I, I changed my vote then.
Yes.
Nice try, Ms. Cortez.
Ms. Ford?
Ms. Ford? You're voting on the consent agenda.
They're voting on the consent agenda. Ms. Cortez did say yes.
She said yes. She said yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes. June, will you do a quick review of the action items from tonight, please?
I will. Takes a minute. Okay, the first one is a list of dates of the DAC meeting and get board representation. Angie Lyle will be providing that for me, and we'll get that in the update. The second one is, how are we managing damage and shrinkage on our computers, and what should be our expectations on this? And I think that we've talked about that one. There was a follow-up question on what is the industry standard for loss. The next one is the City Year impact report that could be shared with the board. And then, there was also a question on City Year was whether the kids or the employees were being paid a minimum wage of $15. Tanisha asked for the academic data for Link and to look for the consistency from site to site for care. I think that, that academic data might not be there, but consistency data could be there. Candace wants customer service data. I think that was on Link as well.
Before and after school care.
Before and after school care. I have to look at them one by one. And then, feedback on the Code of Conduct changes.
I'm sorry, can I add a clarification?
Yeah, go ahead, Dr. Jones.
The, the question around livable wage or $15 an hour was for Link. It could apply to City Year as well, definitely, but I was asking around Link.
Okay.
Yeah, and City Year has a, they have a different model by which they pay, so it's an annual stipend. So, that one will, I think, will be a little bit more difficult, but the Link one probably is more appropriate.
Okay, thank you. And that's all.
Yep. Okay. Well, Dr. Bedell, it's been a great six years, man. Appreciate you and your service. Appreciate your team for having your back, too, by the way. It's not a man-a-one. Your team is there and has really been, and I know you agree with that, right? They've been, they've been a gigantic part of, of our collective success. So, thank you for your time. Thank you, guys, for the team as well, and everyone have a great night.
Well, sometimes that is hard to do.
Thank you.